Welcome to another episode of Crosstalk. My name is Kevin Tochi, and I will be your host for the next 30 minutes. We like to use this particular program as a vehicle to better inform the residents of both Whitman and Hanson on a variety of topics, subjects, upcoming events, whether it's political, things that are ongoing in either of the communities that we serve, Whitman or Hanson. This particular conversation is to get word out about an upcoming special town meeting in Whitman on December 2 at the Whitman Town Hall in the auditorium. Joining me is Town Administrator Frank Lyndham and Whitman DPW Superintendent Dennis Smith. Gentlemen, welcome to Crosstalk.
Thank you.
I guess I'll start with you, Frank. Talk to us about the importance, what are the key items for this special town meeting that need to be addressed?
Sure. The town will be holding a meeting on December 2 at 7:30 PM in the auditorium. We try to avoid special town meetings because it is not a normal part of our process. We like to budget and complete the year's work in May and then come back the following year. However, some issues have arisen, and most importantly, we have a need to do some design and planning to replace a 35-year-old force main that carries sewage from the town to the city of Brockton. There will be four articles on the warrant. The first one is a $4,500 unpaid bill, which means the bill could not be processed before the end of the fiscal year and requires town meeting approval. The second item is a $37,900 appropriation to cover a shortfall in the salary line for our current chief of police. Our former chief retired, had in excess of 130 days vacation that had to be paid out from an existing appropriation, so we need to fund that line. The third item is $7,200 to meet unanticipated costs associated with animal control. And then the fourth item, which is really the reason and the driving force for this meeting, is to transfer $900,000 from our retained earnings account in sewer and water to pay for the costs associated with planning, designing, and preparing to replace a force main that carries sewer from Auburn Street in Whitman to the sewer treatment plant on, I believe it's Thatcher Street in Brockton. This is really an essential process. We have had two breaks in the last year and a half, and they're very costly, and they prevent us from providing sewer service during the period the system's down. Fortunately, we have the DPW superintendent here who is a lot better versed on this than I am.
If you could kind of give us, Dennis, the scope of this project and what you have endured or you're enduring?
It's broke twice, once in 2016 and once in 2017. The first time it was, the repairs were over half a million dollars. The second time, there are three-quarters of a million dollars. The pipe is approaching the end of its useful life, and we need to replace it so that we can continue to send sewage to Brockton. We need to take the action now. We have done work up to this point as far as clearing the easement and having an engineer outfit Environmental Partners Group do the soil tests, borings, and we know that the soil is corrosive. And we're at the point now where we need to move into the design and permitting, and we need, you know, the DEP and EPA and the city of Brockton are looking for us to get this done, and we need to get it done.
What is it going to entail in regards to, you get past the design phase, you're able to fund this, then what? What are we looking at? And what you've mentioned about the soil being corrosive, what evidence have you seen that you've, in some of the pipes, that the soil itself is causing problems?
Had the engineering firms look at the damage that was done to the pipes, and generally a sewer pipe will corrode from the outside in from hydrogens and sulfide. These two breaks have been as a result of corrosion from the outside in. So the soil that they're embedded in has been more corrosive than we originally participated, I guess, when it was designed. When the expense to do these repairs is so great, it's just that we can't, can't just continue the way we are. We need to get this fixed.
So Frank, if you could kind of talk about what the idea is in regards to, this is the main, one of the main articles of the four. What is the process? It's not like you have to raise and appropriate, correct?
Correct. The cost, the money that we're seeking to transfer right now is money that has been earned and reserved. Each year, as part of our operational budget, we prepare an estimate of revenues and expenses, and what remains at the end of the year is then held in what we refer to as retained earnings. The DOR calls it sewer and water free cash. Whatever you call it, it's money that has been accumulated over a lot of years to provide us with a fund to make necessary improvements and maintain both our sewer and water system. The money that we're looking to raise right now or to transfer is roughly 20% of our reserve. Once we've completed the design phase and move into the laying of the pipe, we're looking at a project that's estimated to cost around $8, $8.3 million.
Wow.
Now, bear in mind, this is a pipe that was buried in the ground 35 years ago. The expected life for that pipe is 30 to 40 years. The money that we have been accumulating over the years has always been intended to be a source of funding for maintenance. We just didn't anticipate that the damage on these pipes would be so significant. You're actually going to see a photo of a pipe with holes literally in the top of the pipe. The pipe is literally dissolving, and that's happening, and we've identified areas where it can potentially happen again, and you'll see that in the map layout that we'll show you with the hot points on it. This is something that has to be done. Unfortunately, Dennis inherited all of this a year ago when he was promoted to superintendent of the Sewer and Water Division. Dennis, how many years do you have on that job?
24.
So for 24 years, he's been working in the Department of Public Works, maintaining sewer systems, maintaining water systems at the very basic level. The long-term plan for this would probably have kicked in in a year or two, except that the damage has been so great and so unexpected that we've had to escalate those plans. And Dennis has done a really fantastic job of bringing all this information together. I have here a book with 500 pages in it. I'll start on page one. It is a very encompassing report, but it's because we're going to need a significant amount of design and development as they prepare to lay this pipe. Dennis, you can talk a little bit about the right-of-way and what we've experienced after 35 years of not having access to the right-of-way.
So there is a right-of-way that runs through from Auburn Street to the wastewater treatment plant in Brockton. In order to get the soil testing done, we had to clear that right-of-way. A company out of Quincy did that, the Caniff Company, they were the bid winners for that work. It's completed, and then the boring, soil borings, they did every 50 feet, they took samples of the soil and to determine the corrosivity of the soil. And there are several places where it is higher than we would have hoped for. It's, women, you know, is fortunate, and it has its own pipe, you know, the planning in the future. We don't share our, the force main with anybody. It's approximately 16,000 feet, linear feet, a force main, and it goes to 8,000 feet of gravity main before it gets to the treatment plant.
What's the circumference of the pipe itself?
The force main itself is 21-inch, which is large.
Standard?
No, it's large, it's very, you know.
Wow, you mean Whitman is really pushing a lot of sewage out?
All, yeah. We, on average, we do, you know, three-quarters of a million gallons per day. On a rainy day, we might exceed a million. The plant that, the pump station that sends everything is a 5-million-gallon-per-day design plant.
You're going to have to upgrade that.
No, no. It's, all that stuff will be, you know, other than maintenance to pumps and motors is well-designed and for the most part in great shape.
And the thing you really have to keep in mind on this project, you know, people are going to look at $900,000 for design and work clearing the right-of-way and doing those other things. It's about five miles of pipe.
Wow.
And this is going, this is going through the woods around Massasoit, all the way out to the treatment plant in Brockton. And it's an enormous undertaking, and you don't tend to think of that because it's not visible. It's all underground.
But it's just a clearing, it's not a land-taking per se, correct?
We've already taken the land. The challenge with easements, particularly easements that aren't in our community, is they should always be kept clear. The purpose of that easement is to provide access to that pipe as well as laying the pipe in the ground.
Sure.
So over the years, people have planted, they built over it, they park cars over it.
No way. Who would do that?
So it was not an easy undertaking on the part of Public Works and the contractor to clear that easement.
If I can go back to Dennis, the borings and the results that you've been receiving, any idea as to the corrosive nature of the soil? Is this just because maybe there's weeping of the pipe itself, or is there going to have to be something done to, once you lay that pipe, you're going to have to use certain aggregate in order to, when you put the pipe down, that it's going to be, it's going to have to be on to protect the pipe for many years to come?
The conditions that exist now, I'm not sure that, you know, and nobody realizes whether they existed at the time, the original pipe was, you know, the standard for pipe at the time that the enforcement was originally installed was Dr. Lion, which this pipe is. Now it's a plastic product, you know, so we won't see, it won't have the same effect on what the engineering outfits plan on using. It won't have, it won't be susceptible to corrosion.
All this to flush a toilet, huh?
You know what? When you want to flush, you want to know it's going to work.
Sure, absolutely. Do you feel that this is going to be, there's going to be conversation in regards to this? Do you feel that it's?
I'm sure there'll be conversation.
What are you anticipating, and is there any way that you've, have you heard from folks who are aware of the upcoming town meeting, have had questions, and maybe this is an opportunity to put out some of those frequently asked questions, to put out that information? So what are some of the frequently asked things that have been asked in regards to this, at least this particular project?
Well, typically, when we prepare and present a budget, people always find the amount of money in particular requests are substantial, and they have a difficult time processing that, understanding why does it cost so much? You know, why does it cost almost a million dollars to lay all the groundwork and do the studies and do the clearing and do the other things? What's going to happen, what will happen, I'm sorry, at the town meeting is they're going to ask the next obvious question. What's it going to cost? Now we get into the really startling figures. To run a single pipe, and Dennis, I believe it's alongside this one.
Yes.
And leaving that other pipe in the ground but not using it is about $8.3 million. The idea of laying that pipe as a replacement, a better plan would be to rehabilitate, possibly by sleeving, the existing pipe, running the new pipe and having access to an alternative method of pumping if we have a problem. That drives the cost up over $14 million. So, you know, it may be something we look at as a second-phase type of operation. We really have not presented these numbers to the community as a project yet, and this is our first opportunity to put that information out there.
Now, I think you've mentioned that it's well into, the piping with the project is going to go well into Brockton, correct?
That's, that's one of the things that, as far as the inconveniences to citizens of Whitman, that has not happened. It has been an inconvenience to the people that live in Brockton on Alger Street. The last break required, you know, their water, approximately 80 feet of water pipe to be removed and replaced or fixed, the force main. So there were residents on Alger Street in Brockton that were inconvenienced for practically an entire day without water. And we want to avoid that in the future. We have been fortunate that, you know, the breaks that have happened have been in, you know, places that are not, you know, schools. It's been none, it hasn't had any consequences as far as, you know, because there's, there's no way to stop it. You can't stop the sewage.
Oh, and there's no way for you to know when it's going to happen?
No.
If you look, we are coming into the season, when you have cold snaps, that pipes are susceptible to breaking. Is that when you've experienced them, or has there not really been a timetable when you saw those breaks?
Yeah, it's, they weren't during freezing periods, you know, because one was in October and the one previous, that was in September. So it's, I don't believe that that was a factor. I think mostly it was where the particular breaks happened, where they found high examples of corrosion. And like I said, they found total places of very high, in over a dozen spots, and somewhat high practically along the entire easement.
Okay. So the $900,000, is that strictly just for the design phase and at least begin the process?
It's for the design of the pipe, it's for the
Materials?
Costs associated with permitting. You know, you think of permitting, you go into the building department, you file an application, you write them a check for $2,000, and you're done. This is much more involved. This is going to involve several hearings. We have to seek approval from the city of Brockton to do this project. That includes permitting the laying of the pipe, but it also includes conservation. I believe we've
Brockton, we're already.
Got several
And they've been very, very gracious so far.
Some of this land, some of this pipe is in wetlands. Now, the pipe is very deep in the ground. It's not, it's not that we're at risk of freezing, what is it, eight, nine feet?
Different, yeah, varying depths where, but the freezing is not
Well, below the frost line. But that also means it costs more to get to that.
Right, sure.
And when we lay that
And do it safely.
You're also going to have to lay aggregate and do the other things. People tend not to realize how expensive these professional services are. We've got several engineers involved. You know, you've got design, you've got planning, you have to evaluate what means and methods are necessary to do that, and it all costs money.
So if you're able, this is able, this article's able to pass come December 2, how long does it take for the design phase, for it to receive a design back?
Our hope is if we can get this done now, is that we can get moved through most of the design and permitting by the, by town meeting in the May, in May. And at that time, we'd be able to present something to the town as far as actually starting the construction to replace the pipe. And there's, as Frank said, there's a lot of things that go with this, working with it, you know. Basically, the DEP wanted to see this get done, that they, you know, if we have another break, it's not going to be good. And we, so far, like I said, it's been fortunate that the breaks that have happened have been in places that it was, that were, we had access to, and they, when they did break, it wasn't that bad to clean them up.
Well, bear in mind, when we get a break, it's not like you patch a hole and you turn the water back on.
Can't do that.
We are, in each of those breaks, we've had fleets of trucks going to the Auburn Street Pumping Station. That's where all of our effluent ends up before it goes to Brockton. So there are wet wells in there, not very pleasant places, that hold all of this
Sewage.
Sewage.
Yep.
It has to be pumped out of the wells into trucks, trucked over to the treatment plant in Brockton, and then emptied. We ran, on the first break, I think, believe we ran six days, 24 hours.
How many trucks would you say?
I believe it was somewhere around 105 9,000-gallon tanker trips.
Remember, we're moving a million gallons, we're between 800,000 and a million gallons a day. And they're going in the trucks that hold, what, 20, 30,000?
The biggest, the largest one is 9,000 gallons.
Yeah. So it's a constant, it's a steady, constant run. And not only that, at the site of the break, you have to create a, what would you call it?
A sump.
A sump.
Mm-hmm.
For the stuff that goes through the pipe to flow into, so it can then be pumped out of there and transported. So while it may sound like $500,000 is a lot of money on a break, and it is a lot of money, I can understand why it costs so much.
Equipment, manpower, and dealing with the situation itself, sure.
And you're not running one or two trucks, you're running a whole fleet of trucks, and they're constantly moving.
I think it's worth also noting, and that you had mentioned about the broad city of Brockton being a mental specialty of conservation, but seeing that Whitman is one of their top customers when it comes to sewage and billing, and I know that's an annual article that is discussed, that a bill that is paid, and sometimes you have to find a way to find a happy medium between, because maybe what Whitman is paying attention to, what you guys are calculating, and what they're calculating, could be a little, they'd be off as far as numbers go. But how important, how important is this project, Dennis? So we've got a few minutes left here. Talk to me about the importance, at least getting this started, and at least getting folks to understand that the process must move forward.
It's absolutely essential. I mean, if, if, there's no way to stop sewage from flowing through Whitman. If we suffer a catastrophic event again to the point where we had to shut the water off, I mean, shut the sewer off, or if we could not move it fast enough to the, by truck, it's going to back up into people's solace.
We would actually have to shut off the water system in the town
Yeah.
in order to stop, or to slow down the sewage. And these pipes, many of them are gravity-fed, so if it starts to back up and it works backwards, eventually, it'll start working its way back up the pipes it came from. You'd be talking people getting raw sewage in their house. It's an ugly situation. It is, it's a quality of life issue for us, and it's a really sensitive issue for the Department of Environmental Protection, because they oversee this stuff, and they want it done yesterday, they don't want it done next year.
I would ask you, and that is, we get past, if you're able to get approval on December 2, to get to the design phase, you get to town meeting, you're able to put something forth to the voters, when do you see putting shovels in the ground and beginning this project, and when would the end of the project be? And again, this is just, I'm sure this is a moving target, but this, I'm sure you have a timeline in your head.
If we were able to present something, you know, as far as an article to get the construction started at the May town meeting, I would, I would hope that in, you know, within the summer, fall, following that, that we would start construction.
We've got less than three minutes left, Frank. This is your chance to kind of get that last word out to the folks who are watching this program.
What I, what I can say is, this is, as I said before, a quality of life issue. Whitman was very progressive in the '70s and '80s. I actually found studies back in the '50s where we were looking at a sewer system. So we were one of the communities that said, we're all in. We made the investment. We spent, I think it was $25 million in the late '70s, early '80s, which I guess is probably closer to 100 now, to build that system. And over four phases, we managed to connect the vast majority of houses in Whitman to sewer. That has allowed people to build, build more houses, more, larger houses for families that wanted a little room, because one of the things you measure when you issue permit is how many bedrooms are there, because that tells you, gives you an idea of how much utility you're going to need. We've learned to live with it. We can't live without it, and we need to do this in order to keep it running.
Well, I want to thank both of you for coming, and thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Kevin.
Great job, first time on camera here. Frank, as always, thank you. It's important for you to get out and be a part of this upcoming town meeting December 2, 7:30 PM at the Whitman Town Hall Auditorium. And again, if you have questions, hopefully you can view this program, or maybe contact folks at Whitman Town Hall if you have questions. But again, get out, vote, make this happen. Until next time, thank you for watching. Until next time, thank you for watching.